All right, well. We're live, right?
We are live.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. As you know, tonight's meeting is an extra meeting beyond our regularly scheduled second and fourth Tuesday meetings. We added it for budget deliberations, but given that we have members of the community here tonight, we'll take public comment and then move directly into business under section four of the agenda, shifting the superintendent chair and student remarks until after budget deliberations, so we can get going right into that. All right, so what comment shall be for a period of twenty minutes? This generally allows for about six or seven people to speak. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address, and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens of the committee. So committee members are not going to respond. We're just here to listen. Public comment is a citizen's opportunity to express their opinions on issues of school committee business. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the to the committee before or after the meeting for committee members' review and consideration at an appropriate time, and you can submit those to school committee at WinchesterPS.org. So the way that this is going to work is as follows. We will lower any raised hands and then ask those who wish to speak to raise them again. Ms. Bollnase will read out the first seven names that we see raised, and this will be the order in which we'll be inviting people to give comment. Ms. Bergstrom will be our timekeeper, and you know, once you've been elevated to panelist, you'll have three minutes to present. And we close public comment after twenty minutes, and again, community members are welcome. They're invited to submit comments via email. So with that, shall we lower all the hands? And then I guess if you're ready, we can raise hands and see who who's gonna be giving comment tonight.
Okay, hands will we'll do it one more time. Lower all hands now.
So I have two people up, three people up for public comment.
And Miss
or you would like me to.
We want cameras to be on the speakers.
Yes, please. Yes, and speakers should should give their name and address when they start. And a reminder, each person individually has three minutes to to present, so. Perhaps Ms. Bollnase, if you could keep track and see if any other people raise their hands, we can start with these three folks and and Ms. Bergstrom, if you want to keep time for us and just give some sort of, you know, either warning shortly before their three minutes or notice at three minutes, that would be appreciated, and the rest of us are here to listen. I see we're up to four people now. Shall we elevate?
I'll read off the four names that I have right now.
Thank you.
And please excuse me if I mispronounce. So first of all, we have Paras Bayani and then Gillian McDonnell, Cheryl Timko, and then Nora Cooney.
All right, shall we elevate our first speaker? Yeah.
Can you can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, please.
I don't know if you can't see me. I control the camera for some reason, but I do have my camera on. Would you like me to try to turn it on?
If you could, that would be preferred.
Actually, don't know how to. I don't have the control right now. I don't know. I I'll speak, though, if you're willing to hear me.
Yeah, do you have just just to just to see if it's on your end right next to your mute button? Is there a stop video button?
Let me let me update the panelists. That might be the issue.
Yeah, we'll check on the side, too.
You see the control now for video? Yeah.
There you go. Beautiful. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'll begin speaking. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for for the opportunity to address the school committee, and thank you to all the members who are here and listening. I'm testifying today on behalf, I'm sorry, Parsbani. I live at three oh seven Cross Street, north side of Winchester. I'm zoned in the Lynch Public Schools. I testify today on behalf of a number of families who will be entering WPS but are not currently parents over the next several years. I have two and a four-year-old, and we're starting to think about educational options for our older daughter. And I really wanted to just address the committee about how concerning and destabilizing the recent story in the Boston Globe was. We've heard about this issue for years, but the the degree of issue really was new to to a large number of parents. And it's frankly making this question a great number of things. First, did we make the right choice in moving to Winchester? More immediately, you know, since most of us are not going to sell our homes, do we need to consider private education? Or at the very least, significant private tutoring? That story and and the lack of response that in any case that we have heard, maybe there's been an email within the schools, but broadly in the community has the real potential underlying public confidence in the Winchester Public Schools. All of us moved here for the schools. We were very happy to push for funding increases to support the new reconstruction of not just Lynch, but future projects. And it's really making a number of families question what's going on. And the reason is not the MCAS results. There's some concerning data there. The reason is really the response, and I understand journalists excerpt a small part of what people say. But the quotes in that story from an assistant superintendent seemed very much a we-know-best. It's a minority of parents, even though from our understanding, several hundred parents have spoken up about this topic. Calling best standards that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have promulgated, just something that would make people feel better. This is not the type of response that makes parents have confidence that the leadership of the system is taking this concern seriously, especially when the overwhelming scientific evidence does speak to to certain curriculums that that are good and certain that are bad, and namely, things like units of study that are widely used, not being unnecessarily the supported list. And again, not from our opinions, but from the state of Massachusetts's opinions. At the end of the day, a lot of us have opinions on literacy. Some of us are experts. Most of us are not. But broadly speaking, I think the community feels it needs a voice. We need a response from someone more than what was quoted from an individual administrator in the Boston Globe. We need that voice to be from the leadership of the district, meaning the superintendent. And I do believe the school committee, too. You may have noticed Newton School Committee was mentioned in that story, which took direct action and didn't just say curriculum is not our issue. It really belongs to the professional staff. The school committee was involved as well. So I so I really beg everyone. Parents of children who are below the age of six are worried. People are very much questioning their their decisions. And it's not so much the results. The results have issues, but it's more the approach that the district is taking going forward in partnering with families, partnering with the state and other experts, like the Harvard faculty who are residents of our town.
I'm sorry, but that's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Sorry so much.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Who's our next person? We can elevate them.
Gillian McDonough.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a comment? I'm not sure we gave the email address to Mr. Bayani or anybody else. If they want to email their comments tonight, those go to Aaron Allen. So that's E A.
Actually, Mr. Nick, and it's on the screen.
Yeah, it's just schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org.
My bad. I tried to maximize it so I could see everybody. Thank you.
That's okay. So schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org is the is the address to send your remarks.
And I apologize in advance. It's hard to be the timekeeper to make sure we get everyone in, so that audible noise is letting you know you have your three minutes up.
Can we?
Give me just one second. It looks like Zoom has changed the interface a little bit on this, so. Andrew, if you could move Mr. Bayani back into the attendees. Can't seem to figure out how to do that.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, I am promoting Gillian McDonough.
Hi, can you see me, hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Okay, hi.
Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
Okay, thank you. I'm Gillian McDonough. I live at one thirty-five Washington Street. I really should just say, everything that guy just said applies to exactly what I want to say, but I will say I'm a mom of four. All of my children go to Lincoln this year, spanning from fifth grade to kindergarten. I've seen the Lincoln School in particular administer UFLI curriculum, which is a science of reading-based curriculum this past year and a little bit the previous year, and I have seen it make an effect for my kindergarten child. But I am concerned that it's not, that they don't have enough resources and that it's kind of been a hard pull to get that to get that pulled through for Lincoln School. And I'm also concerned that it's not across the district, so every school is not afforded that same opportunity. And so again, I just highlight everything that he just said. It was literally perfect, but more communication, some communication from administration. I would like the committee to help bridge the gap between the real concern from parents and the next steps that will be taken from the school administration.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Is Cheryl Timko our next person?
Yes, that's correct.
Cheryl, you've been promoted to panelist. You should be able to speak.
See her yet. Ms. Timko, when you're ready.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, pressing all of the buttons to get here. Thank you. My name's Cheryl Timko. I am located at Eight Black Horse Terrace. I am a mom to three in the district, a second grader, a kindergartner, and a newborn who's in my lap, so pardon my pardon any squeaks you hear. I am here just first experience in this setting and very new to this conversation around literacy and literacy curriculum. We have had obviously three years of experience with the Lincoln School. We love the teachers. We love the environment, and our experience has been very positive. But like the others who have talked today, I am highly concerned about some of the issues that have been raised around literacy in the literacy curriculum. And I am trying to get as quickly up to speed on this topic as possible. It impacts our my children and a lot of our children the here and the now. So I'm asking that the school committee help us get some more information. At this point in time, I have a laundry list, an Excel spreadsheet of questions, just just basic questions in my view that we are asking for the committee's help getting answered by the administration and urging that that information and more transparency be shared with the parents so that we can obtain a better understanding and and really understand what's happening inside the schools that where kids are every day and potentially to do a review, you know, of digging into that and digging in further into the curriculum that's applied across our elementary districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timko. Next, it looks like is Nora Cooney and Ms. Bollnase. Let me know if I go out of order on any of these. But I believe Nora Cooney is next.
No, that's correct.
Okay, Ms. Cooney, you've been promoted.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. My name's Nora Cooney, and I live at Tenonida Road in Winchester, and I'll make this short and sweet. I echo what the other parents have said so far on this call. I just want to say that I have been trying now for over a year to get very basic answers from district leadership on some of these questions. I'm not an educator. I'm brand new to this issue, and my kids started their reading journey. I have a second grader and a kindergartner and a preschooler. And I listened to this oldest story podcast, and I was like, yikes, you know, like, I didn't know what was going on. It mentioned Winchester by name. That was a little scary. So then I started to research, started to research, started at questions, and it's like pulling teeth from the district to get just very basic answers. Including this year, I've had numerous questions that started as just general concern. And then my second grader started having questions, problems with reading in the exact way that the podcast forecasted, well, under a certain learn, under certain curriculum, which then led us to have to hire a tutor and do all that. And so then my questions became more pointed, and I just don't get a single response from the district. And especially in light of the Globe article, which they had to know was coming out, I frankly think the lack of transparency and response from the district in a wider sense, holding a town hall, helping people understand this issue. They know this globe article is coming out. To not address it with families, it's going to scare a lot of people, is frankly shocking and excusable and shows just a remarkable lack of leadership. And I think asking the school community committee to please pressure or be more on top of district leadership on this because we shouldn't have to be beating down the door just to get simple answers of, hey, what curriculum could a teacher be using? Or is it possible that there are students in one classroom could be getting a entirely different literacy curriculum and way being taught to read than kids in the classroom right next door? For those of us who don't know education, this is new to us, and we just need to understand what's going on so that we can have a better idea. And not to mention, as everyone has said, the Globe article also raises real concern that while the district might point to results or say like, oh, we're doing standards, but everyone's scoring fine, if those scores are because this richer district is propping up the district by everyone hiring private tutors, that's something the district needs to know as well. So there should be a full assessment of how many families in our district are having to hire private tutors and having to get specialized help and have that look at how the district is actually doing, rather than say that they're doing fine without knowing how much of that's based to being propped up on external support. And so I forwarded my interchange between the district and I onto the school committee, and I'll be happy to share and submit more of my thoughts, but I know that there are a lot of parents, not a minority, that have a concern on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooney. Next is Stephanie Gordon, I believe.
Ms. Gordon, you've been promoted to panelists.
Come here. Can you see me?
Can't see you.
Awesome.
Yeah, there you go.
Hi, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to the school committee and the superintendent. We do have good schools. We have great schools. And everyone's concern is, let's keep, let's keep our schools great. And to continue the conversation on how do we review our curriculum, and I think our parents are asking, how are we a part of this conversation? Is there a collaborative dialogue, maybe forming a committee with teachers and administrators and parents to talk about these issues, not specifically just literacy, but overall what our curriculum looks like? So to be a part of the conversation, and I think there's just some frustration that they don't feel like they're a part of that conversation at the moment. So specifically with literacy, I think a lot of parents right now are looking for some kind of district-wide mandate, looking for a more science-based approach to reading, something that looks like UFLI or a phonetics-based program. Where teachers are trained across the board, because right now there are pockets that are doing UFLI, there are pockets that are doing Lucy Cockens. And right now, it seems like everything is more gearing towards phonetics, and how is that being reviewed? How is that being assessed? Are where is that dialogue? In addition, I think having a committee, not just for, again, literacy, but the total curriculum. Parents, if they could be a part of like a subcommittee to talk to the superintendent's office and again have teachers that that are represented on this committee to talk to about a mixture of solutions, again, not just literacy, but a broader spectrum of curriculum matters. I believe that was less than two minutes.
Ms. Gordon, can you also just share your address for the record?
Oh, yes, apologies. Sixty-four Bacon Street, Ambrose.
Thank you. Appreciate your your remarks tonight. Next, I believe, is Jess Rock.
Jessie, you've been promoted to panelist. You should be able to address the committee.
I'm meeting and starting my video. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Jess Roach. I live at fourteen St. Thomas Moore Drive. I am a VO parent and mother of four kids. My eldest is in second grade. I have a kindergartner and a preschooler and also a an infant. When my eldest was getting ready to start kindergarten, I became aware of some of the literacy issues in the Winchester Public Schools, and we actually chose to keep him on to start in a private kindergarten that had a specific literacy specialist. So we haven't had specific tutoring, but we have had, you know, paid costs that we would not have incurred if we weren't concerned about the literacy curriculum at Winchester. I did somebody, sorry. I think that was just my echo. I just want to echo all of the comments that have been made so far. I was particularly discouraged by Assistant Superintendent Alanima's attitude, her direct quotes, and the view that this is a an issue that is essentially a special education issue that a small subset of parents are concerned about because every parent that I talk to personally, and I represent, I'm on the board of directors of two nonprofits in town. Every parent that I've talked to about this cares deeply. And obviously, when you think about schools, it's reading, writing, and arithmetic. So the first of those is reading. And many parents are having problems in seeing the issues that have been identified, where children are not educated in phonics or phonemic awareness, and it's discouraging doing that. The curriculum is inconsistent from classroom to classroom. I've heard tales of teachers that are having to go out and buy their own science-based curriculums, and they shouldn't be having to make that expenditure themselves. But obviously, they want to do right by their students, so I would love to see an assessment and a review of what's actually being used in the classrooms, and I'd love to know why we, what the defenses were. Having a scientifically proven, I mean, disproven mandate in place currently. What's the threshold for evaluation and review with consideration for improvement? Who are the stakeholders that are setting this policy? Because it seems like the advocacy groups that have been petitioning for change for a long, long time have been able to, they've just been kind of going around in circles and not able to get any accountability from anybody. So I think that our residents and our parents and even the students are trying to figure out how we can effectively voice these concerns and document the request for change in order to implement a science-based reading curriculum at the Winchester Public Schools. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. And so our last presenter is Jennifer Infantino.
Do you know you've been promoted to panelists?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I'm Jennifer Infantino. I am at three McCall Road, and I have four children, three of whom are in the Winchester School District. And I I appreciate everyone taking the time. I also want to thank my neighbors for participating in the discussion tonight and sharing their concerns. I think that everyone has has kind of hit the nail on the head, and what I wanted to underscore is that this is this is not a new issue, and the request for the committee and the administration to address this issue is one that goes back at least three years. I participated in public comment three years ago when my youngest was in third grade. He's now in sixth grade. And I do feel like for my family, like the ship has sailed, but I'm very glad that parents of younger children are aware of this issue, and I would reiterate the request for the school committee and the administration to address the topics that have come up this week in the Globe. I do think it is something that should be addressed directly with the community, and I just wanted to to note that. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Infantino. And so that's been the twenty-minute period that we'd set aside for this. So I want to thank everyone who shared public comment and let you know that we do appreciate your taking the time to share your concerns with the committee. If you didn't have an opportunity to speak tonight, we invite you to share your comments via email. The email's up on the screen. It's schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org. And with that, I'd like to close public comment and move on to reports, updates, and action items under item four on our agenda. So Dr. Hackett, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. Good evening, everybody. So tonight, as you know, we really called a meeting to focus on our budget, FY twenty-five budget proposal, and we are incredibly looking at the public hearing for FY twenty five budget at your next meeting on the twenty-third with a vote scheduled for the following Tuesday, which is the thirtieth. And as you know, through the process, the the vote is will be based on my recommended budget to you and whatever it is that you decide to do with that budget. And then your vote indicates that it is the recommended budget of the school committee, which then goes on to the town manager and the various committees of the town that have the opportunity to deliberate with us over the coming weeks and months prior to town meeting. So we thought really the finance subcommittee, which is Mr. Brady and Mr. Hopcroft, have had several meetings now. We wanted to provide you an update on that this evening, but before we do that, we do have a action item for consideration of the approval of surplusing technology. You have that list. If anyone has any questions about that, Mr. Mr. Merron could answer those.
Are there any questions on the surplus technology? If not, we could take a motion on that.
So moved.
Sir, second?
To. Surplus both.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call vote as we're in our online meeting format. So Mr. Brady?
I.
Mr. Nixon? You're on mute, but I'll record that as an I. Ms. Bergstrom?
I.
Ms. Bollnase?
I.
And the chair votes I, so that is passed.
I do have one question related, if I may, Mr. Hopcroft.
Please go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Just given the number of wireless access points that we just surplus, given their age, that's quite a lot of them. Are those, I presume, are those already replaced or in approving this tonight, we're putting into place a replacement process with wireless access points that are purchased and on their way? I guess that's a question for Mr. Merron.
Yes, those are already replaced at high school. We moved our new wireless access point system there.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nixon. Dr. Hackett, you want to give the budget?
I do. All right. My computer's lagging behind a little bit, so excuse the delays. Could be just me normally. It probably would be, but. So what you have in your packet?
So um, what you have in your packet, what I'm presenting to you tonight is is uh the latest update we have on uh budget development process. One of the items that the committee uh through your um goal setting workshop. Over the course of last year in the summer, in the fall, talked about was was having a conversation around the fees and the fee based programs that we run. Um, so we're going to provide tonight not a budget for conversation about um the programs that that we're going to show you. The purpose of tonight really is to show you um how we budget, um as many of you know, but how we budget these programs. Uh, with a combination of money that's in the operating budget uh that you approve every year. As well as um revolving funds that are where the fees and in the case of preschool, the tuition monies go to. Um, and what that distribution looks like in terms of the total program cost. Uh, the finance subcommittee had a chance to look at some of this, provided some great feedback the other night. What you're seeing really is a result of that. Um, the uh, again, we're not looking to present to you the actual budgets for these programs, but rather we want to show you. Um, how we fund these and and point out um uh that we we may, we are kind of running into some potential issues. As we move forward in terms of the distribution of of the costs. Starting and beginning and more likely projected to rely more heavily on the operating budget than fees. Um, and it would, they will uh eventually have a a more significant budget impact for us. So as a starting point, this is the preschool program. This is FY twenty three expenses. This is for the for last year. Um, just kind of going across the top, you can see teaching administration. Um, and you can see the first column revolving account preschool. So these expenses are what we um used last year out of the out of the revolving account, which is driven by our tuition. Uh, to that we use that tuition, those tuition funds to pay for. So teaching administration, so there was um one hundred and sixty three thousand there. It's about, it's above the equivalent of a one point five oh that we carry in the revolving account preschool in FY twenty three. And we carried about eight ESPs uh or teacher assistants, paraprofessionals in the revolving count um for about two hundred thousand. And about four hundred and eighty eight dollars worth of supplies for um a total expense of three sixty four, four fifty four. Representing um about twenty five percent of the total budget, which is over here in this column, you can you can see total. The total budget for preschool um last year, and these are actuals, uh was one million, four hundred and thirty five thousand, one hundred and sixty eight. So in the fiscal year last year, um, we operated um with about a twenty five, seventy five percent split. You can see that the total revenue that we took in was about thirty thousand dollars short of the three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars that we were planning to charge off the revolving account. But we did have a year end fund balance from the prior year of about fifty one thousand dollars. Some of the year end um balances that you uh in these accounts are actually held over from still from the pandemic. Um, the funds during the pandemic that did not get expended for a variety of reasons, um primarily uh some of the shutdown. So in the general fund, you can see in FY twenty three, we budgeted about five hundred and twenty four thousand about. Um, and you can see the distribution there, so about five point three, teaching and administration, specialist OT, about four point two FTEs. ESP is about five. Um, we carried about fifteen thousand dollars worth of supplies in that year in the operating budget. Total expense on the operating budget side was one million, a little over a million, seventy five percent. Um, and then you can see the totals for the total program. So this is kind of how we've set up uh showing these um the last fiscal year and if you look at the current year. So this is projected, this is this current fiscal year, and these are projections for what it will look like um year end. So we've encumbered the staff, we've encumbered what we anticipate the expenses to be uh over the course of this year. Um, you can see the distribution is relatively similar this year, twenty five percent revolving, seventy five percent general fund. However, um, the operating deficit is larger. And the um consequently, we have uh, we are reducing and running much lower on our projected year end fund balance that would be carrying over in FY twenty five. So all things being equal, if this budget were um carried into next year without any adjustments. Uh, we would have an operating deficit of just under uh fifty thousand dollars that we would uh technically not have funding for within the revolving account. For next school year that we would have to have conversation about as to where we put um that expense. Is there a question? Okay, are there any questions on this while I'm here?
Just real quick, Dr. Hackett. When we're talking about general fund preschool, that includes any grants or any money from or no?
No, strictly strictly our operating budget grant. We do have preschool grant that does cover some uh expenses there. It's fairly minimal. Uh, mainly we charge some supplies off to to that grant. And just preschool program, as you know, um, the preschool program for our special education students is a free program. Um, that we deliver and the tuition costs are charged to students who uh join our preschool program. Who we've called kind of our community partners. They don't, they aren't students with special needs. Um, and we um, you know, we've been fortunate, we've been able to um fill all the requests for students who wanted to go into. We've not had to any kind of a lottery, but that's where the tuition funding comes from. It's from students who are in the program. Um, and uh who are not receiving special education services.
Great.
Sir Nixon?
So just want to make an observation and and uh and it and it. It may have some bearing in how we think about and frame expense around the preschool. Uh, our kids do visit the nurse's office. We've never actually apportioned a portion, if you will, of that FTE towards the preschool. And I would remind the committee, although we're talking about a budget that begins next fall. The fall after that, the new Lynch opens and we have physically expanded the preschool. This committee has talked at length before about wanting to do our best to shorten the waitlist for for Winchester Public School preschool program. And given the number of kids we've designed for that building, we have actually included a um a nurse's suite specifically for pre K. So if not for this coming fiscal year that we're talking about now, possibly for the one after, we have created the physical space. Um, and if we had even, it's just a half FTE, that would presumably be seen on the ledger. So that's sort of in the distance, but it's coming, I think, for a conversation. But what I wanted to throw out, Dr. Hackett, is you as you think about how you apportion cost and and for and to frame a conversation about fees. Um, because our kids do, we do rely on the nursing staff at at the Lynch School to support our preschool students. Is that something that is worth thinking about, whether we we wish to apportion uh some of the nursing expense when we talk about what the cost is in preschool? Would, you don't have to answer it now. I just want to throw it out there. We haven't really talked about that before. But as we're thinking about the the full picture of expenses, that's something um I don't think we've talked about before.
No, yeah, I appreciate it. It's a great question, and I think it's for us to examine uh as we move forward and into uh FY twenty six. Um, we did, in fact, carry nursing services in in FY twenty three, if you recall last year, Lynch was obviously not in Parkers.
Oh, right.
It need nurse coverage, so we did have a full time nurse um apportion to the just strictly to the preschool program.
Right.
Terms of what that might look like um it it for FY twenty six. It's kind of a year over year um question based on what the students' medical needs are, both um within the Lynch uh population of students. But also with our incoming preschool. Which we generally have a very good handle on fairly early on, as you know, it's Director Sarah Casey does a a great job uh forecasting, really reaching out, making sure that we know. What the needs of the students who are who are coming in are going to be. And some of our students stay in the preschool program who are currently with us, so we have uh, we know who they are. So um it it will be kind of, I think, a year over year. Um, in terms of the actual number of FTE that we would need in the total Lynch building to service both the Lynch population as well as the preschool.
And and for what? And thank you for reminding me that. So we just sort of had a one off because of our space constraints. And I think the comment I made, I would also say it applies to VO, perhaps not in a terribly substantial way, because we don't have terribly, we don't have many sections there at VO. But I just want to throw that out there for for consideration when we do get to talking about fees.
And if that were the case, we would absolutely be charging off a portion, whatever appropriate portion of the preschool program. For any of this is which is why um, you know, you see um. Uh, is we four point two, so four point two hundred specialist OT PT, speech and psychologist. Uh, obviously, we don't have a point two person running around, um, but we we have point two worth of services.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So what we wanted to do in this um is to show you this uh. Show you what FY twenty five could look like, um, because we do have some knowns in this. What we do know is if we apportion the staff about the same way as we did uh in the current fiscal year or have in the current fiscal year. And we roll people forward on the uh employment contracts, we, which is a known for us going into next uh next fiscal year. This um and and again, this is assuming same staff, there have been no changes, we've not, this is just taking our current staff, rolling them forward into next year. Whether that's what it looks like in the end, um, obviously you know that it depends year to year. But with that assumption that it is, um, you can see that we uh have a, the budget would go to about uh one point six million. Um, and then you can start to see the distribution um looks a little bit, little bit different. Um, and you can see that we would be looking at an operating deficit based on projected um incoming tuition at the same rates. Um, with the assuming the same number of students of about eighty eight thousand dollars. And we would be operating off really no projected year end balance from the current fiscal year that we're in. So we did want to show you this because we have a little bit more control over the costs, are anticipating. Just so you have a sense for um part of the challenge that we we uh will could be facing next year with a preschool program. And just a reminder of the rates, these are the current rates for our preschool program. A full day program is ninety nine hundred, a half day program is about fifty two hundred. Um, those, if you have young children, um, know that um those rates are pretty uh pretty favorable in terms of if uh you were to, parents were to look at. Other places for preschool program. Um, and there are many reasons why uh parents would be looking for another program, because obviously we don't run the hours that um some uh preschools or parents might need. With children at that age, um, you know, we we pretty much running a a regular school day. So this, that is where our fees currently sit, um, just so you have that information. Athletics, uh, athletics is uh complex, uh, as you know, uh, year over year. Currently, what we want to show you in this, in this table is the FY twenty three budget. Uh, these are actual expenditures, so you can see um what our athletic staff, coaching, you know, byline officials, transportation. Supplies and services, equipment, uniforms, other uh would fall into the category of um renting ice time. Um, any, any kind of contracted service that we need to um, we need to um engage in in order to deliver our program. Um, pool time uh for facilities that we don't have currently. Um, so you can see in the current fiscal year, I mean, I'm sorry, in FY twenty three last fiscal year, these are actual expenditures. You can see that the total program was about a million dollars. Uh, the general fund appropriation from FY twenty three was five forty seven. And then the total fee uh revenue was about a little over five hundred thousand dollars. So the distribution uh in athletics uh in FY twenty three was about fifty two to forty eight percent. We did run an operating deficit as a result of um that the uh difference between we budgeted and operating and and what we collected for fees. Of about three thousand nine hundred and two. Um, and on we, but we ended the year with a year end fund balance. Again, that was primarily left over from the pandemic when we were not able to run um some programs. FY twenty four current fiscal year, this is again, this is projected uh through the end of the year, knowing what we know, knowing what we know as best we can know it right now. Uh, these are the expenses that we are anticipating. We're anticipating a total expense for this fiscal year of a little over one million, but one point one million. Uh, general fund, we have budgeted uh in the current fiscal year of five hundred and sixty five thousand. And uh we are anticipating a uh total fee collection revenue. Uh, and this doesn't just include fees, that it also includes gate receipts or any other funding that we might uh that we might receive other than fees. Of five hundred and seven thousand for an operating deficit of about seventy five thousand dollars. So um, I think the major point here is you can, you know, you can see that we are relying a little bit more heavily. On our operating budget in this current fiscal year. But you can also see that we are kind of on a path to um more debt for some deficits that we've been able to cover through our year end fund balance. More than likely, we'll be able to cover any deficit in the next fiscal year through our year end fund balance, but that fund balance is depleting. Um, and it will deplete um over the next couple of years. Uh, as we, if we, if everything, uh, everything stays the same from the expenditure side to the operating budget amount appropriation to the uh fees, total fees collected.
Dr. Hackett, Ms. Bergstrom has a question.
Dr. Hackett, I know we kept our um athletics budget flat this year there. You know, I maybe the second year in a row. Um, and I'm just curious where we're seeing the biggest growth in expenses in athletics, because we haven't grown the programs. Is there anything that Mr. Riri has identified as particularly challenging for us in continuing to fund the programs at the level that we do?
Like, like everything we do, it's mainly our own people, right? So I mean, you can see um that, you know, the increase, contractual increase um and just who gets, who gets hired for what role depending on their level of experience. Uh, we do have a a step in column system for our athletic program for our coaches. So just year over year, um, you can see that we went one from one, you know, one forty to one ninety. That's really a a big portion of that expense with the athletic staff. So that would be um the athletic director, trainer and others, the coaching um staff, you can see that that increased. So the bulk of that increase, and and this will be true in any given year, because we've not really introduced any new programming. Uh, will be in just maintaining the programming and the staffing that we currently have. Some of these expenses are um obviously out of our our control. You know that we just negotiated a new busing contract, transportation contract. That number can fluctuate. Uh, we know what it costs us per run for transportation for athletics, but we don't know if we are successful. Laid into some seasons, whether or not uh what that final number might be, because, you know, we are, we we have a very successful athletic program, which is great. Uh, it just makes it a little bit tougher to budget, um, because we we still have to transport beyond the regular season. And then, um, you know, I think the, these are fairly minimal marginal increases in supplies and services, equipment and uniforms is is mainly uniforms. Um, and I know that, you know, um, that that expense has been a little higher uh the last few years um than it than it had been prior to. But I think Mr. Riri has done a good job of really trying to stay within a reasonable number, but also making sure that we're cycling out uh uniforms that um that are no longer usable. Um, and then, you know, the other, that can fluctuate as well depending on um what the ice rink is charging for ice time or the pool is charging for for time in the pool. Or uh other uh facilities that we use along with some other expenses that fit in that category. So the S, we have held flat, that doesn't, we've held level service, but we, it has obviously still um translated into an increase in the actual expenditures.
Right, and the um, many of our sports also have a requirement of a certain number of coaching staff that are necessary for student safety. Is that correct as well?
That, that is all, that is correct. The other uh component which we uh you um approved last year in the budget that we're in. Um, as we did bring on from as a uh a full time staff, um, our athletic trainer, which was a contracted service um prior to that. And we were having a hard time, if you remember, finding that contracted service, because the the people we were, the companies we were contracting for, they couldn't find the people. So it's been a good change, it's been a necessary change. Um, it is a requirement by the MIAA. Um, so we, you know, we have met that requirement as well. The other thing that you likely will hear going into next year is um, we, we have run our, many of our games. Uh, with some, with students helping out is kind of event staff. That um is my understanding is that is no longer allowable by the MIAA, but um we'll have clarification on that later. Mr. Mr. Riri is on um on a leave right now, um, enjoying some time with his baby. Um, and we um, we, but those conversations are happening, so we have not built out yet the FY twenty five budget. Um, but um, as you know, and I'll show you the last slide, currently, we're not carrying any increase in the operating budget side for athletics for next year.
Right, and my guess is the only way to lower the cost, and that my last question, Mr. Nixon. Um, the, I see you waiting. Um, the, my uh, my uh. The only way to lower like our coaching and athletic staff fees would be to decrease programming it or increase fees, right?
Yes, is the short answer to the question. A longer answer to the question is, you know, as you know, um, making reductions in athletics can be, is complicated. Because there are also tight on line issues that we need to make sure that we're addressing all the time, not just from um the number of 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 actual teams that we offer. But also from the actual number. but also from the actual number of opportunities that are offered in, in high school athletics. So you know, and, and the other piece of it obviously is every cut that is made in the athletics program where there's a one less student who is going to participate as a result of the reduction, it's one less fee that you're taking from that student to pay for the program. So there's, you know, there's, there, it has to, it nets out, right? It's kind of like, well, it nets out. So there's both an impact in both the revenue side and when you, when we reduce expenditures, if they're programmatic reduction in expenditures.
Well, and I also presume though, that to your point, if we reduce opportunities in athletics for juniors and seniors, we'd have to increase the number of spaces in P E classes, because students are required to either play a sport or take P E by the state, so.
Yeah, very well.
Shipping, shipping costs.
Just to be clear, the super nanny is not looking to make recommendations and.
No, no, I'm not. I'm just trying to figure it out.
For everyone on.
Out in live time.
But there is a ripple effect, there's no question.
That's what I was, and maybe some unintended ones as well.
Correct.
Mr. Nixon.
Well, Dr. Hackett has mentioned ice twice tonight, so you know, I'm going to go there and just make a comment, I'm going to take the flip side of the coin. Ms. Bergstrom just mentioned and say, sometimes if you build it, they will come. Ice, a few years ago, maybe five or six years ago, ice was nine percent of the overall athletics budget. That, that's a big deal. That's a risk factor for us, because that means if ice goes up by ten percent, our whole athletic budget just took a one percent haircut. But for many years, our community was looking to broaden our offerings for girls on the ice. We only had a varsity ice hockey team. And after a lot of persistence, we were finally able to develop a J V team, which is great for those girls who might have otherwise, let's say, given up the sport, or to Ms. Bergstrom's point, would need to find a spot in P E, either junior or senior year. I have, I think this is a good executive summary, Dr. Hackett. I want to make, I'm just going to make a few comments about budget development processes, you know, of Christmas's past. And, and I have a few comments or observations and then a couple of requests. I think what would be very helpful, certainly for me and maybe for others of the committee, would be to get a Munis run, as we have done in some years prior, I mean, before you arrived to, to, to your credit. Munis run will sort of break down the cost by sport. We've also in some years past had from Mr. Riri a breakdown of student participation. I think that has been very helpful for the committee. Probably comes as no surprise, our most expensive sport is football. However, the participation rate is so high in football that the actual cost per student athlete is not even in the top five. So that speaks to bang for the buck, if you will, giving those students that kind of experience. And, and I also think participation rates, particularly when you see them over time, maybe sort of tells a story about the strength of the program. So I'm interested, I'd like to know a little more about what our costs are by sport, which I think we have. I'd like to know more about what our student participation is. And I'd also like, I, I agree with you that, so in addition to ice, you like, I think you just mentioned Dr. Hackett, the pool, so we, there are some facilities we don't have. So to have them, we have to find them somewhere, we have to pay for them. That, that's a risk for us, we can't control, particularly around ice. Ice is in short supply, regulation ice is in very short supply. And some other districts just north of us have found themselves in a tough spot when private owners just decide they're going to start charging a higher rate. I would also like to understand, again, not tonight, but at some point, particularly given our conversation at the last meeting around busing for athletics. I think it would be helpful for the committee to understand exactly how yellow buses do support athletics. So we don't, we don't run buses for all teams, we don't run buses for, 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 you know, for many practices. So are, are we supporting only varsity? Does it include sub varsity? What sports are we supporting? And I'm especially interested in that, because I want to be sure that in face of, of, you know, higher costs over the past few years, we're not actually cutting busing service. I'm hoping we're at least holding on to what we've been doing these many years. But students and families often have to rely on themselves for transportation for athletics. I think it would be helpful for us to have that picture as well, particularly if we get to a conversation around athletics fees. That's a mouthful, but I think we have a lot of that.
We do, that's easy to get. Yep, that is easy to get. Yep.
Any other questions on this? All right.
All right, moving on. Just to reminder, this, these are the current athletic fees. So we have a per sport structure, and then we have a family cap. Transportation. As you know, we contract our transportation services. We did go out to bid this fall, this fall, and I say, was part of that process with Mr. Marin. And we ended up with one bid, which was with the existing vendor who has done good job for us, with us, they're, they're good to work with. Obviously, this fall presented some, some very specific challenges related primarily to bunch, busing all of our Lynch students who, who wanted to be on the bus to Parkhurst, coupled with construction that was happening in town that shut down some pretty well-traveled routes for us. I, we believe that has leveled out fairly well. We've made some changes in transportation, as you know, with our GPS app, so that parents generally, when things are working as they're supposed to, can track to see where the buses are, how far away they are from the house, what their, their house and how, what they can expect. And, and so we've, we've done quite a bit of work around transportation, and the company has been very amenable to working with us on those things. So in the transportation is, is not, we don't hire our drivers, we don't own our buses, it's strictly a private contract. So the, we're looking at the projection for F Y twenty four current fiscal year. And this includes our projection around also the Lynch cost for this current year with the ARPA transportation fund from the select board that voted to cover a significant portion of our expenditure for Lynch, transporting Lynch students to Parkhurst of two hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Currently, that, there, we are not, we don't have word yet, and we haven't really had that discussion as to how we will cover that for next year. In the budget, what you see for F Y twenty five later on the next couple of slides, all we are covering is, is the general ed and sped transportation costs, athletics transportation, we know what those costs are. So you'll see that in our transportation line, but we're not carrying anything currently for Lynch transportation in recovery of that two hundred and thirty four thousand that we currently don't have allocated for next year. So the total expense in our revolving account, again, this is really straight up paying the contract from revolving, we don't pay drivers, we have some, a few costs that we charge off to it that are just administrative for us, but pretty much dollar for dollar, this goes to the contract. We have a total expense of three twenty four. We're expecting about three hundred and thirty four thousand dollars with the revenue. We have an operating surplus of about, about ten thousand, and we have a projected year end balance of about four hundred and two thousand. We're carrying four hundred and forty four thousand in the general fund transportation line in the general account. So in the operating budget in the current year, we have four hundred and forty four thousand dollars there. And you can see that we also have the ARPA funding. So this year is a little unique in the distribution of these funds from thirty two percent to forty four percent, and clearly that thirty four would be getting picked up somewhere. More than likely, it'd be kind of a split. The projected year end balance is, is also related to pandemic. We are projecting that that will continue to be spent down, sorry. And we also know that we have, this is projected F Y twenty five, which we, we know these numbers. We know that we have to figure out this portion of the budget, and that again, is the expenditure for transporting Lynch students to Parker. So while we are in, in good shape, it will still be a hit if we have to cover the entire amount of Lynch transportation, because if you, as you know, we're also not charging any fees for Lynch students this, this year or next year. So we, we have a revenue loss on, on the revenue side, because we don't have, we're not taking fees in. So that, that is where transportation stands. I, I think the good news with that is we do have some room and, and some possibilities around dealing with the, if, if there are no other funding sources for Lynch for next year, which is a one-time expense. We do have some room that we can look to accommodate that, assuming all, other things being equal. And then these are, as some of you know all too well, these are the actual fee rates that we charge for, for transportation for students who are not within the state mandated mileage away from school. So we are required to transport students who, I don't quote me, I think it's one and a half miles at the K through six level. Andrew, is that correct? You put you on the spot, but.
Yep, yeah, K through six.
We don't charge fees for students who are outside of one and a half miles from the school they attend, which aren't very many students, as you know, at the elementary level, because we are, we have neighborhood schools. So this primarily affects secondary. And, but these are the fees for others. Any questions on transportation?
Just thank you for suggesting, when we started this process, to cover the Lynch busing for those families to encourage participation, because from everything that we've talked about here, I believe it's had its intended effect, and it's a worthwhile goal to try to find room for that in our budget moving forward, knowing that it's helped the impacts on that neighborhood and just families with getting their students to school.
Well, I know, I, I know that it is appreciated, and there's no question it's had its intended effect. We have an extremely high rate ridership for Lynch going to Parkhurst this year, and we anticipate it to continue. And I can imagine that all that traffic coming from that neighborhood over to Parkhurst would have been challenging for all of us, including the entire community. So, Mr. Brady, Mr. Hopcraft, did I miss anything? Anything you want to add?
No, I, I appreciate the information and I appreciate the added information you put in on the transportation and the athletics. I think we just have to keep refining it. I appreciate the other points that have been asked for some additional detail. I think that's always helpful to have that from Munis, you know, just so people can see really clearly what the costs are. You know, and just what the, what the different options are. You see how much of different things we cover in fees. We could fund our whole athletic program, we could fund all of our transportation, but we choose to charge fees and, and that's how we fund it. And, you know, you could see what the percentages are, and I, I think it's important just for the community to understand that, and those are all choices that we make.
And Dr. Hackett, I would add to Mr. Brady's appreciation. I particularly appreciate the work that you and the team have done to be responsive to our, our requests to, to, to present sort of the totality of, you know, the fees and expenses across, you know, the general fund, you know, ARPA, the, you know, the, the fees, et cetera. It really puts it into, you know, it's not text, it makes it easier to, to understand the bigger picture. So I appreciate that. Makes it easier to do the policy side.
And I, and I do think.
I would just second that. Or what Mr. Hopcraft was saying, having listened in to the finance subcommittee meeting and just looked, and looking through the original spreadsheet, this is just nicely laid out and much easier to understand for each of those respective areas. So thank you.
I think to the, to the larger point, I, I know that people are surprised when they, when they ask the question or they learn that our transportation fee does not cover our transportation costs. In fact, as you can see, our transportation fee rate in the projected for next year's is only covering just low thirty percent of our total cost of transportation, which, you know, is, is an important point for people to understand, so that they know that, you know, we are, we do carry the bulk of our, of our costs within the operating budget. In, you know, still, we're, we're charging rates that are, that are not insignificant. And, you know, so it's just so that people do know that we're not doing this, just, we're not doing this piece to make money. This is about really funding, funding the actual costs.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Just one last request to the finance subcommittee. Mr. Brady made the comment that we could cover these costs. It might be interesting to have a separate line item, Dr. Hackett, on our budget that said what our, our request to the town would be if we charged no fees. It might be a good way to communicate how fees are used and what the different, the delta is between the budget that we're asking for each year, and what it would look like if our families could go to public school and not pay any fees.
Sure. And that would be, for example, like with transportation, anticipating that, that we would be having the same ridership, which it would be interesting to know if we didn't charge any fees at all, whether or not we would have more students riding the bus too, right? So we'd have additional expense implications.
Right, but it might be at least the starting point for a conversation with people about it.
We can do that. Okay. So as you know, and as we've talked about, the finance subcommittee has been working on the actual total budget. This just kind of tells the story as we brought this forward. You can see that as of the December twenty first meeting, the finance committee was looking at the finance subcommittee, your finance subcommittee, not the town, was looking at a, we brought to them to start our projected personnel rollover. And again, we, the definition for us of rollover is taking everybody that we currently have and just moving them forward, not making any kind of changes for any retirements, possible retirements, or any reductions in sections or anything. So it's a starting number for us, just so that we understand kind of what the implications are of the contract, contract rollover. And you can kind of see how it breaks out, you know, and you'll see some swings here that look high for, from one school to the next, and that's, a lot has to do with where staff are at any particular point in time on the scale, whether or not they're, you know, moving up a step, or whether or not we have staff who are already at a step, so and they're not as much movement. It has to do with column movements, whether people have gained enough credits to move into a, a different column. For example, if they've earned them, or if they've gone masters and they've earned fifteen credits that they've given credit for to move to that column, that has an additional cost implication. You know, so the percentages also, you know, are a little bit misleading, only in that it's important to keep in mind too, that, you know, when you look at the actual number of F T Es, you know, if the lower number of F T Es, the, the higher the percent increase is going to be, if there's a percent increase, just as an example. You know, the high school budget personnel, this rollover budget was up six hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars at seven point one nine percent versus Morocco, it was up four hundred and forty four thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars less, and that has a, a percentage increase of fifteen point two. So just keep in mind what that looks like. So we brought this rollover personnel budget only forward year over year, from twenty four current year to twenty five, we're rolling people over. We actually saw about a, just under a six percent increase with, with no adjustments being made. So from that point, we, and still are continuing to, to evaluate our enrollment projections for next year. I did share with you in your packet, not for discussion tonight, but we did receive the very good, solid first round, I think, really kind of almost really in final form at this point of an enrollment projection that you commissioned with the UMass Doherty Institute. That will continue to, and that will inform, as we move forward, we'll be working with the finance subcommittee on that, and we can have the school committee can have a discussion about that study at, at, at a future meeting. So we're working on that. We do, we are looking at some potential pending retirements. We do not have, we're not anticipating as many retirements this year as we, as we had coming into, next year as we had coming into this year, which does have an implication in terms of, of what we do with, from the, on the personnel side. Mr. Hopcraft, did you have a question?
Let's say, I see you might draw folks' attention to the, the Lynch classrooms that were moved over to Lincoln, because that also has a big impact on the, the deltas in that last column.
Well, taken. You can see it very clearly here. We have, as, as many, most of you know, we have one, we, we only are running one section. uh, as as many, most of you know, we have one, we we only are running one section of kindergarten of Lynch students at Parkers because of space limitations. We have another section in um of students uh in kindergarten here at the Lincoln School. Uh, and that has staffing implications as well, not just the classroom teacher, but also ESP, classroom support, uh, as well as some additional supports, uh, to support students who are, uh, in that program. Um, so you can see that, you know, that shift is very, it's very evident, um, as we're down twenty five thousand dollars, which, um, is not really reflective of people moving forward on on the contract. And again, just want to emphasize, this is a rollover budget. We did not make any other adjustments.
Yeah, so one other thing, uh, the one other thing I just mentioned for folks who may be listening is is that when you roll them over, it has all of the cost of living, uh, adjustments that are in the negotiated contracts and things. I I think that's you know, uh, well understood on the committee, but I know there's still a few people watching.
Thank you for clarification. I thought, yeah, that's a good point to be more explicit about it. So these are negotiated contracts. Uh, we have contracts with the majority of our employees who are within the union. Um, and, um, so these are known increases based on the last round of contract negotiations. Um, next year, FY twenty five is the final year of the three year agreement. If anyone can believe it, um, we will be sitting back down at the table with, um, with the union, um, beginning next year to negotiate a successor agreement. And last year, coming into this this current fiscal year, uh, we did not have the contract completed, so, um, there were a lot less. We had a lot more unknowns coming into the FY twenty four fiscal year. At the at this time of year, we were not done. In fact, we weren't done negotiating even by the time we hit town meeting. So the good news is we have more certainty. Um, so the next step on January fourth, we went to the finance, your finance subcommittee. Uh, we made some adjustments based on some knowns, um, that we were able to, um, um, kind of just hone in a little bit, um, more clearly on what our anticipated personnel costs were. Uh, again, this does not include um, a any reduction of any sections at the elementary level, for example, which is, um, you know, always dependent upon our projected enrollments. Um, and that, but that does not include this, the this, uh, there were some some adjustments here that were made. Uh, that resulted in about a two hundred thousand dollar reduction from the five point nine four percent initial rollover budget um to this version, just personnel, this is not total budget of about five point uh six percent, five point five seven percent. So, uh, we we brought that to the uh finance subcommittee uh, as well at the January fourth meeting, we brought our anticipated other expenses and, um, you know, this, for lack of a better term, and this is really kind of the term that just gets used. Other expenses includes a lot of things, um, includes contracted services. Um, it includes district tuitions for students, it includes uh, any kind of tutoring, uh, includes supplies, it includes anything that is really, for the most part, non-personnel related. Um, and this uh number, um, that we were, that we brought forward on the January fourth date does not, in all red, include, um, it includes the increase in the transportation contracts, but it does not include Lynch transportation costs, and it does not include any anticipated increase is in um e- either professional services or in out of district tuition costs. Those numbers we are, uh, working through now, and we anticipate bringing uh, some additional information to the to the finance, your finance subcommittee on Thursday afternoon when they meet. Um, so this represented, as we brought this together, um, a total FY twenty five initial budget draft as of January fourth, all numbers subject to change of a four point nine three percent increase uh in the total budget. So this is both the personnel budget as well as the other expenditure budget. Again, remembering that we're not carrying uh any addition in in or increases in in certain items such as out of district tuition costs or uh Lynch transportation uh as well. So that is where we ended on January four. The other discussion that the committee had, uh, this subcommittee had was um a discussion around how we report, um, and how we roll up our budget for both public presentation, but more importantly, well, for public presentation. Um, but also how, what's the consistency between what we present publicly and what we actually report to the state. So every year, uh, as we, many of you know, uh, we have a end of year fiscal report that uh, we have to complete in cooperation with a town that goes to the state. Um, and the state is very specific about how we report our spending and our categories. Um, and what we have done historically, um, is we've, uh, carried quite a few positions in the central office that are not actually, um, central office positions from the standpoint of they're not they're not administrative of nature, they're not, you know, superintendent's office or administrative assistants, assistant superintendent, they, these are not, uh, they're not administrative positions. Um, they are actually, um, positions that we carry uh, that we have been carrying that are related to, often related to curriculum. So our 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 content directors, um, English uh, director, um, history director, director of history, all those positions were being carried in the central office number, um, as well as, uh, director of nursing, um, our SEL coordinator um, who works in the school. So what this budget does, uh, and it was quite a a good discussion, I felt, around this. We presented to the finance subcommittee a couple of different options. One, do nothing uh, and leave the central office, um, as is with a budgeted staff of, we currently are carrying, uh, twenty three point one positions in that in the central office line. Um, then we proposed or showed just what would, what would it look like if we if we took a couple of positions out of here, such as the director of nursing, which really belongs in the pupil services line at the very bottom line, one twenty two. Um, and I believe we moved a couple of other positions, just just to show the impact. When we do that, we obviously are distributing those, that one point three million or those eleven-ish positions elsewhere in the budget. So what you're looking at here, which is what, um, the discussion was, and I believe this, the the support for us to to make this move in one year, so we're not stepping into it uh, and we can have good year over year comparisons, is to move all but the true central office positions out of the central office line. It's about a one point three million dollar delta or, um, and that one point three million is showing up in other lines here. So, for example, uh, we are distributing our secondary directors. So our directors, the majority of our directors, uh, are both, uh, they they teach at high school. Uh, uh, most teach a portion of the day, uh, but they're also responsible for the middle school and for the high school. So, um, they are, their time, you know, as a teacher is budgeted at the high school, but their time for for their director responsibilities, curriculum director responsibility, which includes evaluation and supervision of staff in their department, uh, is split, is distributed between the high school and the middle school. So when you go down through, um, you can kind of see the net effect of this, and it does impact, um, certain schools a little bit differently. Again, the percentages are somewhat a function of the fact that there's just fewer staff. Um, and, uh, not to, you know, to point out Morocco again, but just to point it out again. Um, you can see it's a little bit heavier impact, a little bit heavier impact on Lincoln. So this budget, um, that we brought to the, uh, finance subcommittee, uh, came in at, uh, four point nine three percent. This is the last version, which they saw on last Thursday. Um, in discussion, we asked if the finance subcommittee would be okay if we were able to make some additional reduction to come to the school committee with that number, uh, which they, um, they agreed to. So this this evening and where we are right now, as of this date, um, one week away from the public hearing, two weeks away from your budget vote, um, is a four point eight seven percent budget increase. Uh, the adjustment was primarily made, um, in, um, some staffing positions that, um, we, uh, have been able to, um, we've, we've been able to absorb, um, differently, um, uh, and we, but we are getting close to the point now where we don't believe there are really many more reductions that we're going to be able to make within the operating budget. Again, a couple of things to point out, and I should have said this in an earlier slide, but there is no budgetary increase in the athletics program. You can see that's zeroed out. We're carrying the same amount of money in the operating budget that we're carrying in the current year, the five hundred and sixty five thousand. As we saw in previous slides, offset by the revolving account from from, uh, of the revenues. Um, and we are not carrying any increases in special education tuition costs. Um, that will be presented, um, to the subcommittee hopefully on Thursday. Um, and we're also not carrying the Lynch transportation cost here, just the overall general and transportation cost. So, um, this four point eight seven percent represents all but those items. Um, you know, we've talked before about how challenging it really is to uh, have a budget approved by a committee, uh, that we're going to have in place in January. I mean, I'm sorry, in in September of next year, July one technically, um, when we are still in December and January and not really knowing, um, all the true needs that we may be facing, but we're, we're working hard. Uh, Dr. Ellen Emma, um, with this special education supervisors or in principals are working hard to, um, really evaluate where we are with the services that we provide for students uh, who identify in special education, whether or not there are some staffing needs there. Um, and we continue to look through the enrollment. Um, I can tell you, this doesn't also not represent any programmatic changes or improvements. So, um, it's just, this is a straight, um, really a straight level service budget and that we're, we are not, um, we're not looking, this budget does not carry any kind of expansions, such as the expansion you that you voted last year, um, to add some additional, um, um, FTE, uh, to the Mandarin, um, to manner at the high school based on enrollment needs. Um, as well as bringing the athletic trainer, for example, into the actual uh, budget, which was, um, offset by money that we were already spending on the contracted service. So this is really a straight up, really a straight up level service budget, um, and we still have some work to do.
Uh, Mr. Nixon.
Sure. So, Dr. Hackett, just particularly for those in the public still watching tonight, back to your redistribution of the directors. Can we maybe just clarify what the end result is of the distribution? So if you have a director who's teaching, then let's say half, half attribution goes to the high school for teaching duties, the other half attribution is for being a director, but half of their director time is at the high school and half of their director time is at McCall. So does that mean a quarter of their time gets attributed to McCall and it's seventy five percent at the high school? How, what's the end result?
The distribution is is really kind of more based on the actual number of staff within the department. So it's, it's, it's kind of a, it's, it's not quite fifty fifty on the director's side.
Okay. And then with respect to PE, who evaluates PE teachers? Are those principals or does our athletic director have a role in evaluating?
Current evaluation of of our PE teachers or the PE program falls under our SEL administrative position, uh, SEL director. Um, that is a topic of conversation. Um, currently, the SEL position carries, um, not just, uh, SEL, it carries guidance positions, um, health. Um, yeah, our our social emotional coaches. Gentlemen, am I missing anything?
Uh, facts. Um, I think that's everything now.
Okay, well, you can appreciate why I was, I was actually wondering if there was some apportionment of Mark or Ria's time for that. I I assumed it might maybe fell on the principals. I didn't realize it was SEL, so, um. But I I'm I'm assuming in this distribution that you're describing tonight, I mean, there may be other staff for which some small redistribution may also be appropriate, but I mean, uh, it it you may not have mentioned it tonight. Um, but but we have PE at both the middle school and the high school. So I I'm assuming you're sort of evaluating all these positions for that kind of redistribution like you described it tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, our goal really is to reset in FY twenty five, um, moving forward, and and we're really, um, really trying to just have this aligned as closely as possible as to how we actually report our fiscal year to the state.
And I would just ask that as that SEL conversation goes forward, because I I would not have expected that. So it sounds like that that's an ongoing discussion. Um, maybe let us know how that ultimately shakes out and where you land in case there's a change.
Well, we absolutely will do that.
Thank you.
The position itself has carried those responsibilities since its inception. Um, you know, and and I think it's, um, you know, it's it's a good time for us to to be reviewing. Uh, this was kind of in review the last couple of years too, because it there's just conflicts, um, often conflicts like when we have department head meetings. So the guy's department meets and the PE department meets and obviously, you know, the one person can't be in two places at the same time.
Sure.
Also, just kind of a wide range of of expertise. Um, you know, PE is is very different, obviously, in many ways than 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 guidance and and, uh, and adjustment counselors. So um, it's, it's a pretty, uh, broad spectrum and, uh, that that position is responsible for. We don't have any real answers for you. Um, but we, you know, we are trying to find and think about ways that we might be able to to address that.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
I'll I'll just weigh in just from the, um, uh, as a member of the finance subcommittee, um, that we had. Our discussion was, um, very supportive of this because just in terms of transparency for you know, the community and and ourselves, understanding the budget, you know, um, allocating people to to where they are physically, uh, made more sense to us and seemed to or an artifact that there were eleven more people sitting in central office who actually aren't sitting in circle office, they're just sitting there on paper and, um, and then you have to back them out every time you report to the state. It just seemed, you know, clear, you know, um, more transparent, yeah, just to say, you know, this person, call, let's, right, at the time of my call, let's just put them there. So, um, yeah, we were supportive of that.
And Mr. Chair, can I, on that note, may I just make a point of information, because we do still have a number of members of the public watching, which is frankly pretty unusual for budget deliberations. We know, we normally are only blessed with two or three people watching this. To your point, we do report our cost data to the state, but the state has a very prescriptive formula. The state wants to know all the costs that it it deems are related to education, whether or not they're actually in our budget. So, for instance, crossing guards, and we have many in Winchester, are not in our budget. You're not going to, nobody's going to see that in any of Dr. Hackett's slides. They're actually carried as a, as, um, uh, as an expense with the police department. But those numbers still get submitted. Mr. Marin submits all of the costs to DESI. And so this is why, if you do go on to the DESI platform, you're looking for budget information, the numbers you see may not necessarily tie back to what you see here. This whole process tonight is about superintendent and our subcommittee developing a budget recommendation that we can go to town meeting. The vast majority of it is is captured here tonight, but it's not all of it. There's other stuff. It just gets funded elsewhere.
I appreciate that update. Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Just to tag along with that, um, those costs, um, are, you know, part, as Mr. Nixon said, a part of the year-end fiscal report, uh, that we work with directly with the town on Stacy, um, comptroller at the town. Um, and it also includes, uh, costs like as, uh, a percentages of DPW, uh, because we don't hire our custodians. Custodians are hired by DPW, they're hired by the town, um, health insurance.
We also don't get utility bills.
We also do not get utility bills, um, health insurance being really the biggest one of the, um, expenditures that, uh, we do not budget for in our budget, but that is carried by the town and as well as other benefits. So, um, this, these are straight, um, we, our positions really are straight salary positions uh, that you see represented here, but to Mr. Nixon's point, they, it's all reported.
So, and just to add on to Mr. Nixon's point about the utility bills, that means that the, um, uh, the the utility expenses for the new Lynch, uh, you you knew I had to go there. Um, are not going to be a savings in our budget, uh, but they are a savings in the town budget, so.
And why is that, Mr. Hopcraft?
Because of that zero building.
Okay, so we're gonna have solar.
Solar panels.
Exactly, exactly. I appreciate the town, um, uh, support in that.
And I'm only, I'm only joking is the, as an inside joke for people who are here that um, Mr. Hopcraft is, uh, takes a a strong lead in in solar, uh, and has had a strong voice, and we are very fortunate that the project came in such that we were able to fund that for Lynch School.
But it won't save anything in our budget, so just, uh, you know.
But but the, but the warm feeling we're going to have, knowing that we're not burning fossil fuels, I think, is reward enough.
Well, in the town, but and it'll help the town.
I agree.
Dr. Hackett, I just appreciate this change because I I like when we're aligned and, um, uh, with what we're reporting to the state and how it needs to be reported. And I think anything that, uh, helps us increase um, transparency and communication with the town and the finance committee about where people are and how we're using them and um, is it's just really helpful. So I appreciate, um, you guys digging into this and the finance subcommittee digging into this. Um, and I think it's really clearly laid out here. So I appreciate the work behind that.
Miss, uh, Bonnese.
Um, so I was just going to ask Dr. Hackett, just as in terms of next step, next steps, um, will, you'll, we'll see, and or the finance subcommittee of school committee will see the next iteration of this coming this Thursday.
The finance iteration and the school committee will likely, like you did tonight, will likely see Iteration and the school committee will likely, like you did tonight, will likely see another iteration um on, at your meeting a week from tonight for the public hearing. So, um, yes, the short answer. And I also just want to remind the committee that, um, as you know, last year or might or say it publicly, and I have to remind you. Um, that while our budget was, uh, you voted our recommended budget, um, as per the charter uh at the end of January to turn over to the town. That did not end the discussions around the budget, so, uh, because we just know and recognize that things can change. On both the revenue expenditure side, um, we won't have the governor's, uh, we won't know the final chapter seventy number, uh. For example, by the end of January, governor's budget would uh likely be coming out soon, but. Um, you know, oftentimes that number isn't known until the end of June, um, or mid-June. Um, you know, we'll say, uh, that, you know, we, this. We are very heavily dependent on local revenue and, um, I don't have to say that the. People who who live here to you all, pay taxes here, know that, um, you know, it really is, um, our entire. Our school budget, town's budget, with the exception of uh certain items that we do receive funding for, for example. Uh, some federal funding for special education, some state funding for special education, um, some chapter seventy money, which is the uh state's. Uh, allocation to schools for education. Um, you know, we don't fare well in in that particular formula because of. Uh, just the wealth factor of Winchester on, you know, so school systems, um, such as a. A Lowell or Worcester um receive a a lot more state funding through the chapter seventy formula than we receive based on the criteria that are used. To calculate that distribution. Um, so, you know, we, we recognize that and and know and you know that. Um, that that town is facing some, some, we are all facing some financial challenges. I mean, these are. Uh, with their, their capital needs, there are uh operating needs. Um, we are in the end. Uh, one pot of money, so to speak, in terms of the town's needs and the school's needs, so. Um, you know, we look forward to the continued collaboration with. Uh, the finance sub, with the finance committee of of the town, uh, as well as the select board. Um, and uh all the other various uh groups that uh are involved in the discussion around, around the budget, but, um, you know, again. You know, we do recognize, and I'll say as a superintendent, I recognize that a four point eight seven percent number is um is is a healthy number. Um, and it's gonna be challenging for us going into next year. Uh, based on, for a variety of reasons, to really expect that we're gonna be able to do much beyond. Really funding um the needs that we have from an operating standpoint, and that doesn't mean. We can't leverage other uh things for uh one-time expenses or, um, you know, there are other opportunities, but. Um, you know, we just, we just don't qualify for much funding uh outside of the local tax base.
Mr. Nixon.
Okay, so then this just reminds me, and again, it's only because we have still quite a few people on from the public tonight, maybe one last public service announcement that that is important. And I appreciate those who said they're they're very sort of unfamiliar with. All sorts of processes in town, but given that folks are watching this discussion about the budget, we should just clarify, we don't. We're not a taxing authority, we don't print the money, we just spend it, and so the the budget that the superintendent's. Beginning to walk us through is something we will ultimately vote on at the end of January. This really represents our statement of need, but this is not actually what gets brought to town meeting. It's town meeting that votes the budget. For the whole town and the schools. The budget that gets voted for the schools is not technically our budget, it's the budget that comes from the finance committee, and each year we hope that FinCom supports our request. In some years, those two numbers match. In some years, they don't. In some years, the finance committee comes forward and. Proposes a budget that's below the budget that the school committee is requesting, because of course the town manager has to have a balanced budget, so. This is just one part of the process, so if anybody watching tonight is wondering. Why aren't we just increasing these, the these lines? Because we could use the money, I mean, the answer is, um. We don't actually control those purse strings, others do. So this is just part of that process.
Well, and to be clear, Mr. Nixon, they don't include, they don't have um control over the individual lines either, just our bottom line budget.
Yes, and in, in, and in, in, i- importantly, Massachusetts general law, though, makes school budgets, they're sort of entirely fungible to react to the very thing. Dr. Hackett said earlier, it's hard to, we don't really have that crystal ball, we don't know exactly what students will be here. You know, in the fall, we we know generally, we, there, there may be a number of things that happen along the way, and we may have some expenses. Months from now, we cannot anticipate, so by Massachusetts law. We have the authority to shift these dollars around across different um expense lines. Um, the rest of town government does not, so whatever is allocated, for instance, to D P W, snow and ice. That has to, that's only for snow and ice, they can't use it for the cemetery, they can't use it for roads and sidewalks, so we we do have more flexibility there. But at the end of the day, we're, we're just limited by the number that is actually voted by town meeting, um, based on that debate and the floor vote.
Yeah, I was just going to say that as a summary, that it's town meeting that votes on the budget at the end of the day.
The bottom line number. Even town meeting can't add for.
Exactly, the bottom line number.
Which is why it's good to note that the solar is not coming out of that number.
Yes. It all comes back together.
All right, Dr. Hackett, uh. Do you have any more on the, on the presentation? I recall it's more than the end.
Let me bring us back to um the beginning slides here. I can. It's, it's coming, just a minute. Those of you paying attention here. The wait time's killing me.
Get that hamster wheel going.
It's not as long as it feels like, Dr. Hackett.
Thank you. Appreciate someone saying that out loud.
All right, um. Uh, shall we go to um anticipated agenda items or or, Dr. Hackett, we, we have to do um. Your update and the chair and student rep if if uh, um, if they have an update as well. Um, do you wanna do that now or um? Or, or, yeah, let's, let's do that.
I don't, um, just keep it short, just wanted to um uh mention that we did have. Our uh security and safety protocol training, um, half day for preschool through five. Um, last week, uh, it, we felt went very well. Um, I think people were really appreciative of, um, just one. Seeing new protocols, two, being able to kind of have more of a a discussion that was more focused on their own building. Uh, clearly with, um, you know, essentially, you know, six different locations, five but six. Uh, with the preschool, um, you know, we, we, we really had to, and Andrew uh Marin did a great job working with the I M T, the incident management team. Uh, which includes um teachers, administrators and and as well as um um uh emergency personnel, um, S R O. Um, and community school officer, they just did a great job planning and and making the most of the resources and the number of people we had, so it was a combination of. Of uh both in-person and Zoom, um, and uh we felt, we felt it went very well, so it was really a a very kind of good reset for us. It's been, as you know, quite some time since we've had uh that opportunity, uh, it would have been pre-pandemic, it hasn't happened since, since I've been here. Um, so that was good, uh, that went well. Uh, we do have the uh, the secondary one, the middle school and in the high school will be taking place in February. Um, I also just want to mention that, um, we, in your packet, uh, and for. Really for your information, uh, we've uh administratively pulled together along with the uh, the the union W E A. So a few representatives to to talk about, uh, the ten additional minutes that will be adding to the, to the instructional day next year as per. Uh, your negotiated contract, so part of the negotiated agreement with. Uh, with teachers and all staff was um included in that was the addition of ten minutes to the instructional day. Um, we felt that was a a an important addition, uh, given that we do have a relatively short. School day, particularly at the elementary level in comparison to um surrounding communities, so. That committee uh actually put out a survey, um, it has some conversations around. What they, the the value, what they see the value is, um, and how they think feel to impact, I mean, ultimately. Uh, you know, we're, we've got to figure out, you know, where to put those ten minutes in terms of the day itself. Uh, it's clearly gonna need to have an impact on um the beginning of the day, the end of the day. Uh, I think that it's a little bit challenging next year, given that we uh, we do still have uh Lynch School at Parkhurst and. Um, you know, it, we are starting at Parkhurst early now, as you know. So we'll, you know, we'll continue to to uh have some conversations administratively, but ultimately come to you with a recommendation. Um, it really is your boat in the end, uh, like, much like the school calendar. Um, but we've been working closely with the union to try to do the best we can to get as much, um, as many voices as we can as possible. Um, in in that process, so uh we'll, we'll keep you updated on that. Um, and then, um, I also just, uh, want to mention that, and I did already. That you do have in your packet, not for discussion this evening, but for distribution, and uh as we work through the budget process, you do have. The um, the first pass at the enrollment study dot connected by UMass Don Hugh Institute. I thought the methodology was, was well done, I thought it was very smart, uh, and if, as you know, uh, really the task was. Um, you know, how, how would, how do they, and can you factor in kind of the impact of COVID? Um, in the decline in public education enrollments that we see across the state and around the country as a result of the pandemic or through the pandemic. And we are seeing some bounce back, as you know, um, how, can, how, what kind of projection could they do? To maybe accommodate and look, really look at the potential for more of that bounce back. Coming back into um to the Winchester public school system, so, um, they, they did a kind of a straight up more traditional cohort survival methodology. For uh, for one of the initial enrollment projections, um, but they also included a kind of a, an adjusted. Enrollment projection, which I thought was very reasonable, um, I thought, I think it's a, I think the numbers look good. Um, and as we've talked about before, really, that's kind of the first phase of us really looking at enrollment uh and demographics. Um, we, we know that, um, we really need to, as we, as you voted at your last meeting. To uh a commitment and intent to submit a statement of interest for a new building project or renovation, or some kind of new building project for Morocco. Uh, the intent to submit that statement of interest next, uh, this time next year, which you, as you know, as we talked about. Is a very lengthy process, um. Uh, I believe two thousand nineteen was when the Lynch statement of interest was actually submitted and approved, so here we are in in two thousand twenty-four. Um, and we're one more year away from opening that building, so it it's not something that happens overnight, but. Um, we do need to really um consider the uh enrollment implications, um, or the implications of our enrollment projections on. That discussion, um, so that's information we should have, uh, so, uh, as we move forward, um. Into spring town meeting and fall town meeting, you as a committee, I I know we'll have, be having conversations about kind of what what's the next step, but this is very helpful for us. Uh, with the intended purpose of trying to inform our budget process for next year as much as we can in 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 future years, so. Uh, those items are available and uh we'll receive some more attention um by. Both finance subcommittee and by the school committee and in a couple of future meetings, so. That's all I have.
Right. Point of, point of information, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Um, is there, we're, are we still working on a a memo out to, uh, I think, select board, E F P B C and maybe one other body just making. The announcement of that vote, is that gone out yet?
We are still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and um, I guess for the chairs' report, you know, I just wanna uh take a moment on behalf of the entire committee and, you know, thank all of those who uh shared public comment tonight. And also thank all of our educators who work every day, um, with our students and families to help meet all of their varied needs. Um, this is a committee, you know, many of us with a personal view into special education who are. All here like the teachers and administrators, because we care deeply about, you know, all of the kids in the district and want to ensure. They have every opportunity to reach their fullest potential, so, um, yeah, I thank everyone for their participation. Um, and with that, I'll hand it over to our student rep, um, Ms. Jenz.
Hi, uh, it's good to be here, uh, so. What's going on at the high school? Um, it's midterms coming up, so everyone's a little bit stressed, um, but overall it's good. And then, uh, with me, I, um, I went to the Massar event, the Massar like student representative event. I went to the State House. And, uh, we testified on the financial literacy bill. Um, and like I represent, uh, Winchester, like Winchester Education. Um, and I talked to like Mr. Mahoney, and he said to specifically say funding, so I said funding in the testimony. Um, but yeah, it was really fun, there was a lot of kids from all over. Uh, there was from Newton, uh, Chelsea, I met a lot of, um, cool representatives, a lot of students doing. Uh, the same, same thing as me, they're all the school committee members, so it was very exciting and definitely a new experience, but it was, it was really fun. I met the senators and House of Reps and their co-sponsors on the bill, so it was really cool.
Can you, can you tell us a little bit about, just one sentence, what is the financial literacy bill that's? For those of people that haven't been keeping up with the State House on that.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I should have specified, um, it's basically introducing, um. A financial literacy program into every school. Um, in Massachusetts, um, but a lot of the schools like need the funding for it, because it. Could take away from the uh finances of another department, uh, or another class in the school. So, uh, it's a required course for uh students in high school. Uh, to complete before they graduate, so they have like the skills they need to before they enter like. Financial world and dealing with taxes and all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that update. I know Ms. uh Sharo Rohat is uh not available tonight, but will be with us at our next meeting, so, uh, we appreciate. Hearing firsthand from, you know, the students inside of our building, so thank you very much.
And Michaela should be expecting a large check in the mail as a result of that, or do we not? Should I not wait?
I know, I'm hoping for it too, it'd be, it'd be really nice.
All right, I'll let everybody know if I get it.
That, that would be a slam dunk for your first uh testimony in front of the State House.
You'd be, yeah, statue of you right up front of the high school.
Exactly. Um, all right, so the next item is anticipated agenda items for our next meeting. Uh, we will continue with the F Y twenty-five budget uh development, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar. Uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five uh school day, the addition of ten minutes. Uh, Mystic School, uh, security updates and the linker, Lincoln Chiller uh options, uh, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. I also just want to acknowledge and thank the parents who spoke tonight, um, you know, they. Took their time to share their concerns, and I know we don't have. Literacy on our agenda tonight, but I'm hoping that we can put it on a future agenda. I think it's definitely something that. We do need to talk about, I I appreciate their concerns, I certainly share some of their concerns, and so I'd like that. That to be on a, a future agenda item, I don't know if. I need to make a motion to have that happen, or if that's just something that, you know, we can. Have some consensus on, having heard those concerns, having seen, I mean, we had more than seventy people, um, come to our meeting, which is. Very uncommon, I I can't think of the last time we've had that many people come to a meeting that we've had online, so I. I'm just hopeful that that's something that we can do, um, you know, potentially at our January thirtieth meeting or a meeting shortly thereafter.
Uh, we can certainly take that under consideration to put onto a future agenda, um, you know, thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
Uh, future meeting dates are January twenty-third for the public hearing on the budget, um, and then January thirtieth. And that is the agenda for tonight's meeting, and.
I have another point of, point, point of information, so can you remind me, I don't have my budget development calendar in front of me. What was our consensus around a snow date? So that January twenty-third, that's an in-person meeting, right? I think we're planning for that. Typically, so pre-COVID, we would ad, we would advertise a snow date. As a backup, I mean, in ten years, maybe we used it once, but we do have Zoom today, we can rely on as a backup, um, does anybody remember what our? Plan was, and I'm asking, because you know, uh, my driveway is pretty ugly tonight, and I broke my back shoveling it, so it could happen again.
Yeah, the date we had on the calendar was February first, which I know is, is it, is a day after the end of the month, but, um, uh, it was deemed.
That's right. Given, uh, that was, in other words, it's not January anymore, but it's close enough, um, and and our plan.
Vote, not for the public hearing, so we don't have a posted date for the public. So we would likely go to Zoom, which I think is appropriate, um, and then. And then for the actual budget vote that you have scheduled for the following week, which is on Tuesday, the thirtieth, you do, we have posted a snow date of of Fri- uh, February one.
Okay, and so given, given that we have not advertised a snow date for the public hearing, we would actually, we basically would have to go to Zoom. Right, because that's the day we've advertised, okay, good.
Yep.
And we, we could also, we could also, uh, choose to go to Zoom for the thirtieth.
Correct.
Yeah, you always have the option to do that, um. Yeah, if if the weather conditions were bad and y- you could make the decision to do the thirtieth on, on Zoom, um. Or do, or to use a snow day, so.
Well, tonight's a perfect example where I think the weather really would have kept a lot of people away. I I'm I'm glad we had this, I mean, I think we had already planned to have this meeting over Zoom, because it's not one of our sort of regular school committee meetings, it was more focused, but I I also appreciate. How many people, uh, came not just to speak, but to listen in and kind of show their interest and concern, um, that would have been a lot more difficult if people were trying to make it, uh, across Winchester tonight, given the roads. Okay, thank you.
And and for all the families that had small children at home with them as well, I think it made it easier for them too, Mister Nixon, so we appreciate everybody.
Yeah, good point.
Absolutely, uh.
It's not gonna be snow days, so can we just get that out of here now before? We end up going to school in July, so.
The seniors would beg to differ, Doctor Hackett.
I know, it's so much, it's really so much pressure.
And speaking of seniors, I understand, Doctor Hackett, we will be updating the calendar with a graduation date?
Yeah, well, we will update the calendar, um, the, our yearly school calendar, have the graduation date on that, um, and as you know, about. Not too far in the future, uh, the high school will be sending out a lot of communication around the end of your senior kinds of activities and events. And just reminder that every school does have a, uh, their own calendar on our website, so if you go to. Uh, Winchester P S dot org, um, and you just, uh, you can see the the listing of schools, go to the school, and. Each school does have a, uh, a Google event calendar, um, that does, um, you know, most of the time, is fairly up to date with the events that are of of parent community interest.
Excellent, so, um, I think at this point, if we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. And Mister Brady.
Aye.
Mister Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Ergstrom.
Aye.
Ms. Bolnasey.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, meeting's adjourned, thank you, everyone, um, and thank you all for your, all you do. All right, take care.
All right, good night, everybody.